Welcome to the October 21st, 2025 Johnson City Regional Commission Planning Meeting. If you're here to speak during the public hearing portion of the agenda, please wait until I have opened the public hearing. Once opened, one person at a time may come to the podium to be recognized. Please speak clearly into the microphone and begin by giving your name and address. Then each person will be allowed three minutes to speak, and we ask you to speak only to the commission. I'll now call the meeting to order at one minute after six. Commissioner Dutton, would you please give us the invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Sir, please bow your heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, thanking you for the privilege to serve this community. We ask for your guidance in all that is said and done in this meeting. Grant us the wisdom to make decisions that reflect your kingdom and help us to lead with humility, to listen with compassion, and to act with integrity. Lord bless our city and all who call it home. Let your presence be among us now, and may we all do all we can to bring glory to you and serve the common good. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty, justice,
We have before us the agenda for this evening. Do I have any requests for changing the agenda or making any additions or adjustments?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we've got the agenda. We also have the amendments from the meeting on September 9th. Any changes or adjustments or corrections?
We approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, for the public comment section of the agenda, we have five people that have registered for public comment, and they have all registered to make comments about the item on the agenda related to the Minga Road point on our agenda, and also for that, we will also have public comment for that. We have Britt Bowers registered, Tracy Bowers, Chris Buck, Tony Martin, and Stan Widener. Can you raise your hand if you're here? You're welcome to come to the podium one at a time. Just which one would like to come first? You'll have three minutes. Could you please give us your name and address?
Yes, Tracy Bowers.
Come to the podium first.
Tracy Bowers, 269 Claude Simmons Road.
Thank you.
We also own the property at 237 Claude Simmons Road. As most of you were at the meeting in July, you might remember that we were opposed to the rezoning of this property on Minga Drive. My reasons for opposing this rezoning haven't changed, and the number one reason is still the increase of accidents that will occur if this development is allowed. We have seen many accidents in the 17 years that we have lived on Claude Simmons. I know I had showed photos at the previous meeting, but I still wanted to show this one again one more time. This is the guardrail on Claude Simmons that has been hit multiple times, you can see. I also had stated in the previous meeting that I had contacted Washington County 911 to see if I could obtain the number of accidents that had actually occurred in the 780-foot stretch of road in front of our two properties and Minga Drive. I had picked a date range of January 23 through June 25, and had found that there had been 29 accidents just in that 780-foot distance. When we got the notice this was coming up against the rezoning again, I reached back out to Washington County 911, and since July, there have been nine more accidents in this exact same stretch of road. I am aware that our area is growing, and there is a need for housing, and I also believe that property owners have a right to develop their property. However, this property on this street is not the answer. My understanding was no changes have been made to the rezoning request of this property, except that after speaking with Chris in the Washington County Zoning Office yesterday, he informed me that no concept plan was submitted this time. Previously, a concept plan was submitted showing 69 homes. The PRD-2 zoning for this particular property allows a maximum of 120 units. This certainly makes me question, what exactly are they planning? With no binding concept plan required in Washington County, if this rezoning is approved, I feel like we're potentially victims of a bait and switch. 69 homes were unthinkable, 120 is crazy. Minga Drive is too narrow for two cars to safely pass each other now, and certainly cannot support an additional 150 to 250 cars daily. I'd like to take just a second and ask that if anyone in the audience is opposed to this rezoning, to please raise their hand. You guys voted against this rezoning in July, and nothing has changed from that meeting to now, except more accidents occurring, and so I'm asking your decision to vote against the rezoning not to change as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a Britt Bowers here?
I'm Britt Bowers, also on 269 Claude Simmons. I'll be reading this statement for Jeff Hoplin, our neighbor, who lives at 130 Minga Drive. He couldn't be here due to the last-minute change of the meeting date. He was going to be here last week. This is from Dr. Hoplin. As we all know, the rezoning of 138 Minga Drive has been resubmitted by the developer. There have been no changes to the request since the prior vote. I am unclear as to the reasoning for reapplying this soon after previous denial by this planning commission, with no changes. Minga Drive is a small cut-through road from Claude Simmons to 11E. It is a narrow road with no shoulder. The electrical poles sit very close to the edge of the road with no allowance. This road has many limited sightlines. Since most cars use Minga Drive as a cut-through, they are often traveling at excessive speeds. I know all of this because my driveway is adjacent to this property and runs parallel to the only entrance the development would have. I have personally had several close calls with possible accidents simply attempting to pull out of my own driveway. The proposed zoning would allow up to 120 homes to be built. A development with such high density will add a significant amount of traffic to an already busy and dangerous road. In addition, the only two ways out are either to 11E, which is hazardous to pull out on, especially when making a left turn, or the one-lane tunnel at the other end of Claude Simmons, which is already overloaded with long waits. Other developments have already been approved within this area, which will worsen traffic in the very near future. Minga Drive is a local road within the Johnson City limits. While the proposed development is in Washington County, the city would be providing utilities without the benefit of property taxes. Also, the addition of this many homes may also place a strain on utilities. During my time collecting signatures for the petition, several residents voiced concerns about issues with water pressure after a new single home had been added. The addition of such a large number of homes does not correlate with the existing housing densities along Minga Drive. Although there is some medium-density housing on Minga, the maximum number of units is 14, and this is obviously nowhere near 69 to 120. In closing, I ask that you once again deny the rezoning request. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Could you please give us your address, sir? Yes, my name is Chris Buck, and I am the owner of 285 Claude Simmons Road and 283 Claude Simmons Road. To echo what Tracy and Britt said, the two main objections that I have to this rezoning is, one, it's a little bit like a Trojan horse. We're not being asked to vote on, here's what the proposed development is. A lot can change. Unfortunately, the current process does not allow us to review any serious impacts until after the rezoning would happen, especially the impacts of final density and conceptual grading plans. There are numerous other issues resulting major traffic flows on a small, underdeveloped rural road with problematic sightlines and outlets to larger ulterials. The site plan for 69 units has only one narrow access point, which if it was blocked by an accident or fire, prevents any access or egress from the site. Removal of trees from the heavily sloped and forested north portion of the partial results into views into secluded backyards of current property owners, which leads me to my second point. One of the things that the Horizon 25 Plan outlines was, how do we support growth in this area while maintaining what makes this area so great? And this rezone would not be aligned with that vision, in my opinion. So I humbly ask you guys to consider denying this rezoning proposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tony Martin?
Thank you. I'm Tony Martin. I live at 1 St. Anne's Court, a residential community a quarter mile from the property under construction, under consideration. I've been there for 27 years. In the past two weeks, I've heard from many of the residents in our homeowners association about this rezoning, and they're opposed to it because of unsafe conditions, it would add, with 69 homes on Minga Drive, especially to schoolchildren catching a bus, elderly residents driving an area county road not built for such a development. Earlier this year, the commissioners rejected a plan to construct 105 townhouses on another nearby road, the one we live on, Indian Ridge, because they considered it would be unsafe to add that many folks and cars on that street. Indian Ridge is a popular cut-through from State of Franklin. Much like that rejected proposed development, Minga Drive will be unsafe if we open the door to another developer, which will clog our roads, overload the city's infrastructure, and create other burdens for the existing community. On Indian Ridge Road, the traffic is backed up several times a day from cut-through traffic, and this addition of homes would just make that worse. Probably a light is going to be needed soon at 11E because of the traffic congestion. I urge the city to look beyond the short-term benefits to this development because there are downsides as well. Whenever we set the bar for development and growth, we tend to go down from there. So I ask, what is the plan for developing neighborhoods in the future in Johnson City? Who will pick up the bill for widening roads, traffic circles, sidewalks, other things that were promised from the D.R. Horton development on Indian Ridge but have not come through yet? Let's not settle for quick and easy answers to developers. Let's set the bar high and lay the foundation for Johnson City that is the best it can possibly be. The Wall Street Journal recently listed us as a top place to move and live. Let's not squander that. Let's use that leverage to attract the best builders, the best developers, and do what is best for all the people who live, work, worship, pay taxes, and call Johnson City home. My neighbors and I ask that you vote no on this zoning request until further study is done to ensure the safety and well-being of the folks on Minga Drive and the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Good evening. My name is Stan Widener. Address, 9 St. Anne's Court. I own the contiguous property to the Minga property under question today. I think we should point out that this commission, at the last meeting, January 8th, denied rezoning to PRD. What has changed? The zoning office says nothing. It also should be remembered that the plans that are announced for your consideration are non-binding. Once PDR is granted by the county commission, that can change. You know, I remember when the Washington County did not have a zoning. They voted that in a number of years ago, and a lot of people didn't like that because the government, tell me what to do with my property. Until you get a development like the Minga property next to your land, then people begin to realize how important you are to the community, to keep things contiguous, to keep things balanced, and that's what we're asking for tonight. The people who live there, they live in a unique area. It's country. It's rural. And to put a development in there like a PDR would destroy that. My land, I'd like to see it split into five acre mini farms eventually to maintain that country attitude through there. I'd have no interest in developing subdivisions or PDR community for it. We need, I think, PDR communities in Washington County. As fast as we're growing, we actually have a rush hour now, and we need that, but not in the middle of a wonderful rural community like Minga Road and Locust Lane. Find a place in the county that's appropriate for those places, and then you can do that, and we trust that you will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the section of our public comment. Now, we'll move to our consent agenda, where we have three items. They are all three bond release, bond issues. Two of them are bond releases, and one is a bond reduction. Two are, one is with Archer's Point, one is a Phase 2 bond release at Clearwater Springs, and one is a bond reduction at Keebler Meadows. Does anyone have any questions that they want to bring those forward for detailed discussion or questions with staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items as recorded in the minutes in the packet. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move forward to the new business items, and that takes us back to the 138 Minga Drive, item 7.1. Ms. Putney, would you please come forward for staff and make a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Just two comments before we get into the presentation. We did receive an email that was presented in addition to the public comment that was provided to the commissioners prior to the meeting. And just a background of how we got here today, this was a request in July where the planning commission heard it and recommended denial to the Washington County Commission. The applicant withdrew the application prior to it going to the county commission, so the withdrawal of that application makes them come back and start from square one. So that is why we are rehearing this proposal tonight. Just to orient the commission with a timeline, so tonight, October 21st, is the recommendation and public hearing for the planning commission. The county commission will hear it on October 27th for a final action, and then, at a date to be determined if it is moved forward by the county commission, the county planning commission will approve a comprehensive development plan as the final step of development. Just as a reminder, the property is located and depicted in the red star, roughly 18.17 acres off of Minga Road. It is currently low-density residential and general agriculture, so it is split-zoned, and the request is to a PRD-2, which is a planned residential district, to accommodate a further residential development. The property does have various elevation changes. It's steeper to the north and downwards from the east to west, with dense vegetation to the north of the property. It is within our urban service area, so we do have services that could be provided to the property. There is a water line along Minga Drive and sewer line roughly 200 feet north of the water line and for traffic, and we'll have, we have our engineering department to answer any further questions. But at the time, if this moves forward of a driveway permit, since it is a city road, a traffic analysis and impact study could be required per the developer, and any improvements to the road would be at the cost of the developer. But that would come at the time of a driveway permit to the city. The property is, a portion of the property is in the city limits. It's roughly .5 acres, as depicted in the red outline, so the entrance into the property is in the city as well as the right-of-way, and it is zoned R3. So the current zoning is a little bit, it's split-zoned. The lower side of the property is the low-density with the upper side as agricultural, and the small portion of the city is R3. And as is previously stated, the request is for planned residential, too. RP, PRD-2 is a density of 6.5 units per acre, so it's similar to RR3 or an RP, and at 18.17 acres, they would be maxed out at 118 units. Setbacks are 25 feet from the boundaries of the track, and additional transitional yards of 15 feet when bordering less intense district uses, which would kind of be the surrounding Washington County properties. The current land use of the site is agricultural. Along Minga Drive, we do see multifamily, single-family, and commercial closer to the West Market proximity, which is depicted in the red and your multifamily in the orange and single-family in the yellow. The future land use does call this for residential and commercial. Minga Drive as well, residential and commercial. And the Horizon 2045 Plan does call for this to be neighborhood residential, as it is adjacent to a commercial corridor. So the PRD-2 is in line with the neighborhood residential future land use map. It allows for single-use residents, a mix kind of in the middle of compactness and low and high-density uses, mainly residential, and kind of in-the-middle setbacks, so very similar to what we see in our R3 districts. The Horizon 2045 also has policies that support neighborhood residential for the land use map, for housing choices that reflect the compatibility of scale and creation of place for single-family homes, and it aligns with the placetime maps to increase a variety of housing options, sizes, densities, and locations. Citizen comments and concerns, very similar to what we heard in the July meeting, are density, traffic in the impact to Minga Drive, and how it connects to West Market Street, stormwater runoff from any development, as well as those natural features of gray and forested areas. And again, I will reiterate, the difference between this and the last proposal is there was no concept plan or proposed plan for the planning commission to look at. Washington County does not have a requirement for a concept plan at the time of rezoning, so that has not been provided to staff. So staff recommendation, it is consistent with the future land use map, but other factors to consider are the increase in impacts of traffic volume and congestion, which can cause safety concerns, and that would be, again, addressed through the city driveway process, and it has not, the request has not changed since the original denial by the planning commission on July 8th, and there is a public hearing for this.
Questions upstairs?
Can you help me understand, what is this? Sorry, the city's driveway permit process, what is involved in that?
Yes, so I will actually defer to our Public Works Engineering Department, who can thoroughly walk that through. I think Lawrence Perry can answer that.
I didn't hear the question. What was the question?
I'm sorry, it was to explain what the city driveway permit process is.
So it's a public, Minga Drive's a public road, so they'll need to access the public road, so they'll put in an application, and at the time of development, and also at the time of development, we'll ask for a traffic study to be done, that the developer will hire a consultant to do that traffic study, and they'll follow kind of the T-DOT process, and it'll let us know, it'll inform the, it'll inform the developer what they'll need to do to make the public road system safer for the residents that'll be using the development and for the city of Johnson City, that the other residents are driving through there. So, but they'll apply for the driveway permit, and I'll be doing the review to make sure that it meets our needs, and we'll review the traffic study to see what impacts it's going to do to the road system, and again, the developer will pay for the traffic study and for the improvements to the road system.
So that doesn't happen until after?
Until the time.
So if we approve this tonight, then it would have to happen, right?
Yes, yeah, at the time of development.
All right.
Let me ask a further follow-up question. How far, how far, how far does that traffic study extend?
I think Anthony Todd would probably kind of be able to define that, define the limits, how far out we want to go, and work with the consultant to kind of determine that. Like I said, we're going to be using the T-DOT process.
I mean, would it extend out to West Market Street?
I think that's what he said last time, so.
Okay.
And if I can follow up one more time, you might have said this, I might have missed it, but they would have to pay to have the improvements done, or does the city pay to have that done?
The developer would pay for the road improvements as well.
The road improvements?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any data in-house currently for road traffic on Minga Drive from previous developments?
Not that I know of, but again, that we'd hire the consultant, we'd work with them to kind of define the limits and figure out how it's going to impact the road system, how far out it needs to go.
Thank you.
I guess what I'm curious about is the timing of all this.
Yes.
One of the concerns you have, if you have a development like this, you're probably talking about with the, what, the absorption rate of 60, 70 homes, up to 100 homes, you're talking about a five-year process, maybe a three-year process. I don't know, depending on what the growth we have now, it could be even a little, maybe a little shorter. If the road is improved, you go through stages of a road study, and then you initiate a road design, and this has to be accepted by the city commission and county commission both, does it not?
I think they would submit the plans, and we would review them to see that it meets the city's.
I'm sorry, I can't quite hear you.
I believe he would submit the plans to the city for review, and then the city staff would review them to make sure that they meet the requirements of the development. And we would work in conjunction with the county, because the developments in the county, it's kind of a different animal, where they need to be reviewed by our staff for the construction plans, but when they actually pull the home permits, they'll be pulling the home permits in the county. And so we typical, we have a typical local street cross-section that we'd like to see with sidewalks and curb and gutter, but the county doesn't like to maintain all that kind of stuff, so we work with the county highway department to make sure that it meets their needs as well as ours. So typically, like at Thompson Road, I think it was the Thompson Road development, they had, we got rid of the sidewalks and curb and gutter, they had kind of a shoulder.
Well, Minga's a county road, isn't it?
No, it's a public, it's a city public road. Yes, so they'll be accessing the city's road, so that's why we do, need to do the driveway permit as well as the review of the construction plans. So they do, they've done it, they're going to do a preliminary plat.
But it's not a prerequisite to the development getting started, or is it? Is it a prerequisite or not?
It would typically be, sorry, I'm jumping. In a situation like that, where off-site improvements are required to enhance the infrastructure, to support a specific the infrastructure, to support a specific development, a municipality would typically require that those improvements be complete prior to any certificate of occupancy.
So they would go, I guess they would go through the preliminary plat process, where they're showing where the, how they're going to subdivide the lots, how they're going to build the road. We'll work with the county to make sure that it meets our needs and their needs, and then they'll do construction plans. And then ultimately, they'll build the road, and then they'll submit for a final plat and bond any outstanding issues, but the, our requirements is to have the, uh, road to, uh, binder and to have all drainage improvements put in, like the detention pond and, uh.
But it does get really, really messy where you have city infrastructure.
That's kind of where I'm going with. It's, it's, it's kind of a messy process. In addition, uh, I, you're, 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 are you saying you're requiring the developer to improve the entire Minga Road section there, or just in front of their development?
The traffic study will define the improvements.
I'm sorry, I'm still having trouble.
The, the traffic study will determine the, uh, the length of the improvements along Minga Drive.
Yeah, but who will be paying for it?
The developer will. He'll pay for the traffic study and pay for the road improvements.
So you're saying that if the traffic study comes back and says the entire section of Minga Road from Eleven E to Claude Simmons has to be improved, that the developer will be required to pay for that before they can get the development rolling? That's what I hear you saying?
Yes. I mean, me, meetings can be had and, and things can be worked out, but that's, that's something for city management to talk about. But for right now, yes, the developer would be responsible. We would be, uh, under the understanding that the developer would pay for the traffic study and for the road improvements, because this development is going to be impacting the road system.
I have a question regards to the cost of, I, I think Ms. Putney said that it was two hundred feet, um, that you would have to run the sewer, bring the sewer to the property. Is that right? Did I say that right?
Yes, so let me back up here. Sorry, let me get my, there you go. Um, what, the water line is along Minga Drive, and the sewer line is two hundred feet north of that water line.
Okay, so we would, the city would be responsible for running that, is that correct?
If it is on part of the public infrastructure side, then I believe so, yes.
And, and, and so there's no tax revenue or anything for the city because it's in the county? So it's basically going to be a cost to the city?
With it being in the county and connected to city services, they do have an increase in tap fees and, and usage fees, so they do kind of recoup that with the higher usage fees and tap fees.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, guys.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you, Riley. I'll now open the floor for public comment. Is the developer or his representative here? Would, do you have any comments for us, or you, you have anything you'd like to share? Please come forward and give us your name and address. And if you have anything you'd like to share, or if you would like to suffer our questions.
My name is Jonathan Lewis. I live at forty-six oh five Bristol Highway at Piney Flats.
Thank you for coming back tonight.
So at, at the first meeting, we heard the issues of, of the public concerns surrounding the rezoning, and we've returned to address some of those issues tonight, better, to better provide a clear understanding of the development itself. The city will acquire a traffic study, and the developer will be required to address the findings. The results of the traffic study will most likely be a widening of Minga Drive for about four to five feet to get to the twenty-four-foot, uh, standard width of road. Currently, it's anywhere between eighteen and nineteen. There's plenty of room to do this within the current right-of-way, and this is what has been done with the past, in the past in Washington County, just like you mentioned on Thompson Road. We basically, if there is a road that is not up to standard, we widen it for the entire length. The developer is prepared to do that. This should take care of the issues with Minga Drive, which seem to be the majority of the issues that the public had at our previous meeting. The density and use proposed with this rezoning follows the city's Horizon master plan and the city staff's recommendation. The, the commission, the last time, acted as, as if this had no bearing, and even questioned the revel, relevancy of the Horizon plan. They basically said that if it were annexed, the city may look upon this more favorably. If it were to be annexed into the city, which would be the next step, and rezoned, the rezoning of currently in the city is R three. R three will allow, allows for a greater density than PRD two. It, it's a total of seven units per acre. This was a result in a hundred and twenty-seven units, and it could be an apartment complex. The PR due, PRD two county zoning allows for six point five units per acre. However, the most single-family homes that, that could possibly be built on that property would be around sixty units, sixty to sixty-nine. There are only three properties that are, so, properties adjacent to the subject property to be rezoned, and it is far set off of Minga Drive. There's no development right on Minga Drive, it's several hundred feet off Minga Drive into where the development would be. But at the last commission, you know, uh, there was twenty-five people who got up and spoke about how it's just going to destroy their property. I think that any development in there is going to see the exact same opposition. But this being a PRD with a twenty-five-foot surrounding landscape buffer, less density, the, the homes that are proposed are three thousand square foot footprints, we're not talking about a D.R. Horton development here. So when, um, there, the only three properties are currently adjacent to this property. One is twenty-some, they're very big properties, except for the one that actually comes off of Minga Drive. The others, um, enter their property off Claude Simmons. And are far rem, the residences are far removed from this development. Let's see. The units proposed for the eighteen acres amounts to about a point two nine acre lot, which is standard subdivision, R one, uh, um, kind of development. You know, it was treated like this sixty-four, sixty-some unit development would be the straw that breaks the camel's back on Claude Simmons Road, Creek Road, all the way up to the traffic tunnel. If that is the mindset, then there should be no development in this area. We're following the Horizon, we're following the city staff's recommendation, so, uh, that's all that can be asked of someone who owns this property, follow city staff's recommendation and the planning, uh, master planning for this area. The sanitary sewer is on the property, um, there would be no extension to the property. It currently runs through the, the valley as, like she said, two hundred feet off of, just to, just to clarify that. There's approximately seven hundred and, one thousand seven hundred and sixty linear feet of widening that would need to occur on Minga Road. Once I've already said, the develops not, there's no road frontage lots off of Minga, it's far set off of the road. You know, all of the developments along Claude Simmons, uh, Alexander's Grove, Strawberry Fields, Misspa Hills, they all met the same opposition. So I ask that the planning commission look favorably upon their recommendation to the county, because we have met the rules, um, of the planning, we have their recommendation, um, and with the traffic impact study, all issues that come of that, from that study, will be addressed by the developer at their expense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the developer?
Sure, Jonathan, before you. Could you, perhaps you want to come back? I think the, um, you, you are aware that if, um, you know, through the, the city's, the city's rezoning process, um, a binding concept plan would be required.
Right.
So there's a significant difference between the city's process and the county's process. Your recollection and my recollection of the deliberation from the July meeting are a little different. My recollection is that, um, that, uh, the, the, what the commission, what the commission said is that the commission does think that a development in this area would be appropriate, but not a blank check, you know, not a carte blanche to, um, to max out the density here. I think what I, my personal feeling and what I heard from among the commissioners was that there was a, an extreme discomfort with, with giving that carte blanche. So absent a, uh, absent a, um, binding concept plan, I think it would be very difficult for any of us to support, um, a, uh, an increase in density, because we just don't know.
I agree.
We just don't know what's going there. And that prudently is what we have to do. We have to weigh the, um, the Horizon twenty-five, twenty forty-five growth plan, and we have to weigh the infrastructure. And I think there were some significant concerns with the capacity of the infrastructure, not just Minga Drive, but the intersections as well, all of which frankly should be considered holistically, not piecemeal where Johnson City's having to look at a piece of it here as part, as it pertains to the infrastructure with the county approving plans somewhere else. So I think that's just a point of clarification.
I agree. And the developer is a home builder, uh, construction partners, uh, of Johnson City. They don't build apartments, you know, they're a home builder, that's what they want to do. They don't want to, uh, um, and, you know, like I said, they're proposing three thousand square foot footprints, just the footprint. These are going to be half-million-dollar-plus homes. So, uh, it's our opinion that something like this would, would fit in perfectly.
I'll bring it back with a binding concept plan as part of an annexation process, then.
Yeah, the, unfortunately, the county, it is in the county, and they don't require that.
No.
But the, the, the same plan that we, we, uh, presented the last time is the same plan that we, we're going with. So.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the floor is open for anyone else that wants to make comments to, you're welcome to come forward if you'll give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes. There's plenty of time.
My name is Linda Stern Sorrell, and I live at two fifty-two Claude Simmons Road. And I request that you deny the pro, uh, proposal for rezoning the property at one thirty-eight Minga Road. And my parents bought the original three acres I lived on seventy-nine years ago in nineteen forty-six and named it High Hollow. I enjoyed a magical early childhood there, and my husband and I moved back and raised our family at High Hollow in nineteen seventy-eight. And we, we purchased High Hollow from my parents and an additional adjacent four and a half acres from Andrew Minga in nineteen eighty-six. Since then, our daughters, granddaughter, and now my grandniece have spent magical childhoods there. Future generations of my family have expressed their plans to return to High Hollow to enjoy our quiet, beautiful countryside full of native flora and fauna. This is our beloved heritage and community. What disturbs our quiet, magical little farm in our community is the high volume of accidents on our road. Where it was once safe for us to walk, ride our bikes, or stop our vehicles to chat with our neighbors like Andy Mingey is now totally unsafe. The guard rail between our property and Minga Drive needs replaced as it had been hit so many times. We have witnessed one death due to hitting the utility pole near our mailbox. Less than a month ago, on September the twenty-fifth, I walked down our pasture and found a Jeep that had gone over the guard rail. As the Jeep wasn't visible from our house nor the road, you can imagine my anxiety until I found no one in or near the Jeep. That time, only a sheriff deputy and a tow truck were needed. With the number of houses that would be allowed if this property is rezoned, I fear even more frequent accidents on Minga and Claude Simmons Roads, plus an additional strain on both our county and city infrastructures. Again, I request that you deny the proposal for rezoning the property. Thank you for your service to our beloved community.
Thank you, Ms. Stern.
My name is Michael Duver, and I live at one fifteen Dove Drive, um, up on, uh, Headtown Road. There was the map up there of the property. I was the listing agent for two years on the sale of that house on, at one thirty Minga that, uh, Dr. Hopland, uh, purchased, and I knew of nothing, uh, nobody had contacted me. I was trying to contact the, the owner at the time of the, who, you know, just to see what's going on, and there was no word. So two, it was two weeks after Dr. Hopland closed. But, uh, Larry England is a colleague of yours, and he's a friend of ours, and we, we found out that, so Mr. Sells owns the big acreage right by the tunnel. And there was two houses, I don't know if it was Greg Cox, uh, cleared just up Roan Street, uh, there was two houses, because they were, we were expecting to hear that there was a bridge going to be placed over the railroad track. But we found out now that, uh, and I might be, I might, might have changed, that CSX will not allow a bridge to be even put over top of their, uh, railroad track. So every week, I'm like right on Dove Drive there, I can see it on this computer. I'm on, uh, uh, Har, uh, Headtown Road right there, just on, on Dove Drive. And it's every week I see an ambulance go down that road. I mean, I can hear the, see the sirens, fire trucks, ambulances, and so my concern right now, you know, even coming over here tonight, I go through the tunnel, and it's wrapped around down to the FBI station practically. I was, uh, I was representing a buyer at ten seventy-two Oakland, which is down Meti View, down to Oakland, and they were asking one, we were under contract for one point eight, now it's up to three point six. They canceled my buyer. But right now, you know, Greg Cox, they're building all of that, those high-rises for, uh, right on Roan Street, all of, I mean, there's like three, three hundred units there down on Oakland, right by Cheddar's, there's another three hundred and fifty units. It's just going to add so much traffic, uh, to it. I've been bugging Rusty Crow for years, I've lived, I've lived at this location for ten years. I've been asking him for Claude Simmons, can we just widen the road even a few inches? He goes, well, we're going to have to talk to all the clients. I go, well, I'm a realtor, I can go to, I can go door-knocking and ask, hey, would, would you mind if we added a foot width to the road? So recently, uh, this summer, I think, they added about three inches to each side, which is okay, which is good. So my concern is, uh, the traffic, that tunnel, the, it's just going to, if, if this is developed right there, first off, there's no traffic lights. Oh, thank you, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more, any more comments? I'll close the floor for public comment. Okay, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, the question's to us.
I'll go first. I, you know, this is a request that I have an issue with for a number of reasons. First, there's been no change to the request that we've already made a decision on. So I was curious to even see it on the agenda. You know, second, a, a portion of this property is within the city limit, the right-of-way, the front portion on Minga, but yet the developer's choosing not to bring it. But yet the developer's choosing not to bring it to the city. And why is that? Well, I can speculate that it's because he doesn't have to, he or she doesn't have to submit a concept plan, as Commissioner Dutton alluded to earlier. May not be the reason, but that's likely the reason. Obviously, safety is a big concern with the neighbors on the surrounding properties. But I guess the biggest issue for me is, yes, while we do have a housing issue in Johnson City in our region, and this is inconsistent with the future land use plan, when we look at the 2045 plan, it talks about this property being single family, but larger tracts, which means smaller density. And so this property is on my commute home. So I drive by Minga Drive multiple times a day, including today. I went, I went by it today just to look at it again. And when you look at the surrounding properties, they're all small farms. And Ms. Putney did a great job. And if we look at our packet, when you look at the north property, it's A1. When you look at east of this property, it's R1 and A1. When you look at west of this property, it's R1 and A1, all low density. Now, there is a, to the south of this property, there is some medium density that's R3 and R1 and B4. But that's my biggest issue. It's not, what's being proposed is not consistent with the adjacent properties. And so if, if the developer was bringing a development that was larger tracts, many farms, I don't think this commission would have an issue with it. I don't think that the neighbors would have an issue with it. So I would disagree with the developer's comment. So I, I'm going to be voting no for, on this issue tonight. And that's where I stand with it.
I think that's very well put, Commissioner Williams. I, I mean, I, so I agree with you. I, I think, I mean, again, we're, you know, we're being asked to recommend approval of a development that could be, you know, with zoning, even though the developer is saying, oh, we're not going to put that many units in there. You can't. But the, the underlying entitlement would be there without a binding concept plan to modify, to correct, to make it otherwise. I think it would frankly be irresponsible of us to, to, to approve something like that that is so clearly incompatible with the existing infrastructure in the area. And as we talked about, and I think even with a, even with a, even with a suitable development that is compatible with the surrounding land use, which would be, still be consistent with Horizon 2045, I still think there are concerns with respect to the infrastructure. And again, and this, this notion of city infrastructure and modifications to city infrastructure and a separate, a separate entitlement process for a piece of property in Washington County makes me extremely nervous. And yeah, I certainly can't support this, this request.
Any other comments?
I think in general, I'm a, I'm a pretty big advocate for more housing. We know we need it. We need all kinds of housing. We need entry level starter homes. We need luxury homes. That's, that's the future. We know that people are moving to this area. And I think, Ben, your earlier comment about looking at the traffic flow in this area holistically, not just at one road. You know, I trust that our systems are in place to protect our citizens and our safety. And I was happy to hear that the developer would be prepared to increase the linear footage of, of Minga. But that's a, that's a small stretch of road when you look at the overall ecosystem of traffic in that area. And it's, it's been quite challenging over the last couple of years to remedy and to, to just make it easier to get around that part of our community. So I'm, I'm just hesitant. I don't like having no change from the previous meeting. I wasn't at the previous meeting in July. But despite my very strong desire to have more housing, and in most circumstances, more housing is just what we're going to need to vote in, I'm uncomfortable with the strain on traffic and safety in this area. So I, I too would be voting no.
Any other comments?
I echo what Commissioner Williams said. You know, I, I struggle with the fact that there's no concept plan. I mean, we have no idea what they're going to build. And, and I do totally agree with you in the fact that it just doesn't seem like that's the place for it. So I, I will vote no on this as well.
I think I see where this is going, and I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny rezoning.
Recommend denial.
Or, excuse me?
Recommend denial.
Yes, that I recommend denial of the 138 Minga Drive to the PRD2.
Second.
All right. The motion is to recommend denial to Washington County of rezoning 138 Minga Drive from R1, A1 to PRD2. And a second, further discussion? And I would note for you that if we make that recommendation for denial, that can be overridden only by a two-thirds vote at the county commission. Any further discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Let's, let's make sure we're clear. This motion is to deny.
To deny.
So yes, is to deny.
Yes.
Recommend denial. So would you please call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
All right. Now, our next item is, will be presented by Ms. Maggie Darden. It is a grant for Parks and Recreation Department from TDEC. Some good news.
Is it okay if I give folks a moment to step out?
Yes, we can take just a second to let the.
Although they would be welcome to stay. Ready? You're welcome. Commissioners, my name is Dr. Maggie Darden. I'm the Planning and Project Manager with the Parks and Recreation Department. And I'm here tonight to present to you for your consideration a grant that we have through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation called a Local Parks and Recreation Fund Grant. So to answer your question of why am I here, TDEC is asking that we make the rounds and present this to advisory boards and to commissions so that people are informed about the project that we have going on. And so what I need for you all to do is to deliberate on this presentation, and then we will go to recommendations at the end of this. So to tell you a little bit about our timeline of where we are today, we started this process all the way back in January of this year by submitting an intent to apply. We were approved to even submit an application to TDEC. And then we really wanted to get community guidance on where this plan would go. This was identified as an A in the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Strategic Plan, which is why we put this forward to TDEC. From that, we ran an online survey so that community members who would not be able to be in attendance at an in-person community input meeting could still give us their input. We presented that input back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and to City Commission to seek approval for the remainder of the application process. So we applied, and then TDEC said, congratulations, we have awarded you $445,125.50 as a matching grant to the city. So where we are today in this process is we are completing the steps to execute our grant contract, which includes coming here before you all, presenting this project in detail, and answering questions you might have about that. After we meet the terms of the contract, we'll start to make it happen. So I want to give you a little overview of what the online survey, what we asked of residents in the online survey. This was a check all that apply of what people were interested in seeing in this playground. They wanted to create a really nice, comprehensive new playground facility. And one of the things that came out of that was the desire to develop an inclusive playground. So what that means is it has diverse features such as slides, swings, climbing walls, balance beams, and sensory elements poured in place surface with ramps and transfer platforms. We had a playground manufacturer present concept designs to us. We had several so that we could take those to the community input session. And I found this to be an extremely poignant point of information about what accessibility means to our community. So on here, you'll see out of 1,000 children, 85 have some type of disability, with one of those 1,000 having a physical disability, which is what people so often think of when they think of creating an inclusive space. 41.5 out of those 1,000 children are going to have some type of cognitive disability. So we want to design a playground that will meet the needs of all of our children who are learning and growing in Johnson City. This is one of the images. The playground that we are working on, that we would like to move forward with, with redesigning is Willow Springs. And so right now Willow Springs is Johnson's Depot in reference to Henry Johnson. And so we want to pay homage to the train theme that currently exists, something that the children love, that the family said they wanted to keep. So this is just one concept design of what that would look like. Here's another of the 5 to 12 playground area. It's pretty cool. It's pretty tall. Still has those train features incorporated into it. It gives children something a little bit more than what they currently have at Willow Springs to play on. And then we also want to bring a splash pad to Willow Springs. We know our community love our splash pads. So with that, in the theme of making an inclusive space, we're really interested in a water table, which is what you see on the left-hand side of the image, and some sprinkler features as well. So this is what the playground currently looks like. I'm going to put that on there so that you all can have a reference point if you haven't been able to go to Willow Springs lately. It is in need of some TLC. This playground was installed in 1997. It was a partnership between the City of Johnson City and the Junior League of Johnson City, which we have continued to support as well throughout the redesign of this project. It's a pad structure. We're going to keep the scope of this. It's going to be very similar. This is the new add of a splash pad. It'll be a smaller sized splash pad to match the current infrastructure at Willow Springs. And so what we'll, what we'll do is we'll have a playground area for two to five-year-olds, so toddlers, 5 to 12, an inclusive playground, and swings as well, so that we can keep all of those really great features that the community asked us to keep. So I'm happy to answer questions. And here are your decision options for today.
I think this is awesome, and I think it's very needed in our community. So I commend you all for proceeding with this.
What's the timeline?
The timeline depends on when we finalize and execute our grant contract. And so what we, what we are anticipating, we have some more hurdles to clear. So we have to submit planning commission meeting minutes. But we're anticipating that we'll have an executed contract by the end of December. From there, we have to participate in our purchasing process. So it could depend. We really want to install it in a low-traffic time and as quickly as possible. So we're really trying to move really fast on this. I don't have a set timeline because we have these purchasing factors and construction factors, but as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Does this have to go to the City Commission, too?
It has, yeah.
Okay.
But it has to come through us first, right?
It has gone to City Commission in the earlier stages of this to seek approval to apply for the grant because it's a matching grant. It was a $445,000 matching grant. So they, they approved that. And now we have to present the scope of the project in detail to Planning Commission.
Does it have to go through so many readings or just one meeting?
It has to go through one meeting, and then your minutes, the second meeting would be the approval of the minutes. So we'll have to have documentation of both of those.
So can you go back a slide, I think?
To? The site plan?
No, the slide where you've had.
Oh, this one, the decision option. Yeah, great. I like that slide.
So we need to, we need a motion.
I'll be more than happy to make a motion to approve, to prove the funding for Willow Springs Park Playground and Splash Pad Amendment.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think it's a wonderful concept. I'm excited for the project. I'm a Rotarian, which Ms. Kelly came and spoke at our club today. But we funded a boundless playground not too long ago to help serve our disabled children that could have, come, have a place to play. So I think it's a.
Do you want to get out there and use that splash pad?
Yes. So job well done. Thank you for all your hard work.
I congratulate you on getting the grant. Fantastic. Further discussion? We need to call the roll for the vote.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I think we have a, an item that's going to be presented by Ms. Bell. And I think we have a recusal for that.
Yes, fellow commissioners, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote since I have a conflict of interest.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. We're here today to talk about a project that has already come before you. So I'm going to give you a little bit of history about it and then what we're doing now so that you can make an informed decision. We're looking at a second amendment to some protective covenants that run with the land for the subdivisions of Garden View and Highland Heights, which is in the project area along John Exum Parkway. And specifically, we're looking at Moreland Drive. You may remember in November, on November 12th of 2024, you saw this development plan or concept plan that was approved for 12 homes along this, and I'm trying not to point. It's going, the, the road that's coming up from the bottom of the plat is John Exum, and then the road that's parallel with the bottom is Moreland Drive. And it's a development that's planned to come in to provide those 12 homes with the Holston Habitat for Humanity Development. This was approved pursuant to the current R4 zoning restrictions, the minimum standards. As the project, as the project developed, we realized there are protective covenants that run with the land for this particular area. And it was approved, these protective covenants were approved quite a while ago, April 17th of 1959. And encompasses this, this area either partially or wholly, depending on some documents. We can't 100% say that it encompasses all of it. But the issue that has come up is when developing a, when creating a development, when you're talking about the construction, you have to meet the current zoning requirements. They are not the same as they were in 1959. Most notably, there was no R4 zoning. And so the restrictive covenants allows for the same, allows for the advancement of the permitted activities within each zoning period pursuant to how the zoning code is updated. But it specifically enumerates the restrictions for R1, R2, and R3. And so it's, it creates a, an issue within this community about which restrictions and which setbacks and, and standards need to be followed. So what the proposed changes are is to incorporate those minimum standards just as they have been previously for the R1, 2, and just as they have been previously for the R1, 2, and 3, for the R4. So what that will change is the, or what that will add, because there was not previously the setback for an R4, it will add the minimum lot area setbacks and the maximum height and the maximum allowed occupancy for buildings and structures on a particular lot. Like I said, it will not change the activities that are affected by the zoning code because those have been allowed to change as time has passed, the way that they're written. Because this particular protective covenant was set in place by the Johnson City Housing Authority under a redevelopment plan back in 1959, it requires amendment by going through the Regional Planning Commission, the Housing Authority, and then the City Commission. It also requires a majority vote of the property owners in this area. So it's quite a large undertaking for an amendment. But it is one that just kind of brings it into what the modern times are and makes sure that it allows for the following of the minimum standards that we require. So your decisions at this point is to whether or not to adopt the second amendment or approve the second amendment so that it can go before the additional governing bodies disapprove it. And if you are disapproving it, then to enumerate why.
All right, do we have any questions for staff? Could I, would I have anyone that would be interested in making a motion?
Well, I'll second. As Ms. Kelly said earlier today or tonight, we need all sorts of housing, and especially our, serving our low- to moderate-income families. So this is a very important project, so I'm in full support of it.
Okay, I think I heard somebody say they made a motion. Did I hear somebody say they made a second?
I'll, I'll be happy to say.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. Any further discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn, I'll make some announcements. I want to recognize Commissioner Timbra Aldridge for her candidacy recently for the interim JC City Commissioner. Her, your dedication to the city is a model for all of us. I want to tell you how much I appreciate you. You've made, you did yourself proud, and I'm very proud to call you a friend and an associate on the commission, Planning Commission. I really appreciate your hard work and your dedication. You should be looking forward, perhaps by the end of the year, to a revision proposal that is under review by the, by City Council of the bylaws of the Planning Commission. Those have been drafted by the, your vice chair and have come from the Officers Committee and are in the hands of council for their review. And they'll be coming back to us as soon as they get a chance to review them. I suggest you put a hold on your calendar for the hours of 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock on next month's Planning Commission meeting date, probably from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock, for a training session on variances. That's probably going to happen. I'm not sure that's actually absolutely carved in stone, but that's, that's the plan. Recently, I asked you to rank your preferences or your priorities on projects that were in the Horizon 2045 plan that are attached to the Planning Department, on which ones you thought were the most important. And I've given you some information back of how those ranked out in terms of the most important in the view of all of us acting as a group. I've asked staff to take that under consideration. And we might sit around the table and talk about that maybe around the end of the year and get the view of staff in terms of what that might, how that might influence their choice and plans for projects next year. That's not an instruction. It's just a food-for-thought discussion that we might be able to fit in before the end of the year. And I would like to introduce you to Sarah Flyful, who's sitting in the front row. She is a new staff member that started about three or four weeks ago, I'm guessing. And she is our new staff person that has started recently. And another staff person is in sight and will probably start before the end of the year. And I can't begin to tell you his name. He's not a. Flyful, did I say that correctly? So we've got two new people starting, one's already here. And that's, unless somebody else has an announcement, I'll call this adjourned. Thank you.